Reports from district staff and to set policy for the district that will improve student achievement. We will also address budgets, contracts, personnel appointments, and other business items that require a vote of the board. The management and day-to-day operations of the district are the responsibility of the superintendent. It is not the role of the board to make managerial or operational decisions. The board has policies and procedures in place to assist the superintendent in resolving management and operational issues. If items appear to move quickly, it is because the board meets in an agenda meeting, committee meeting, prior to the board meeting for an in-depth review of all agenda items. The committee meeting for the October 2nd, 2018 school board meeting will be held on September 18th, 2018, at 3:00 PM, and the public is invited to attend. As a show of courtesy and respect to each other, we ask that all mobile phones be turned off and that no flash photography be used during the meeting. For those wishing to address the board during our public comments portion of the board meeting, please note that we will accept speaker cards until 6:20 PM. Thank you for taking the time to join us this evening and for your interest in the operation of the Duval County School District. Board members, I invite you to stand for the opening message given tonight by Chaplain DeGio and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We ask that you be with us tonight. In the book of James, it says that if we lack wisdom, we should ask. Wisdom, the proper ability to most effectively apply knowledge only comes from you. We need your instruction, we need your wisdom, and we need your guidance. Everyone in this room and everything that's said and done in this city tonight. And we ask this in our Savior's name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight, we're going to have a very special presentation to honor American Founders Month. I am going to read the proclamation from Governor Rick Scott. In observance of American Founders Month and Celebrate Freedom Week, Governor Scott has issued the following proclamation. "American Founders Month and Celebrate Freedom Week in Florida. Whereas the nation's founding fathers and the sacrifices made for freedom hold a special place in the history of the United States of America and the state of Florida. And whereas during the month of September, various groups, including civic, fraternal, and religious organizations, as well as public and private educational institutions, are urged to recognize and observe American Founders Month through appropriate programs, meetings, services, and celebrations in which state, county, and local governmental officials are invited to participate. And whereas during American Founders Month, public schools at all grade levels are encouraged to coordinate instruction related to the nation's founding fathers, including an in-depth study of the intent, meaning, and importance of the Declaration of Independence. Now therefore, I, Rick Scott, Governor of the state of Florida, do hereby extend greetings and best wishes to all observing September 2018 as American Founders Month in Florida and the last full week of public school classes in September as Celebrate Freedom Week in Florida. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the great seal of the state of Florida to be affixed at Tallahassee, the capital, this 16th day of August in the year 2018. In addition to various speakers in our schools throughout the month, our students will receive additional instruction on the Constitution and will be receiving a portion of the Declaration of Independence. Students from Atlantic Coast High School have prepared a video reciting the preamble to the Declaration of Independence."
We hold these truths to be self-evident that all men are created equal.
That they are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights.
That among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness.
That to secure these rights.
Governments are instituted among men.
Deriving their just powers from the consent of the governed.
Thank you, and we would also like to thank the teacher at Atlantic Coast, Chad Kushner, for participating and helping these students with that video. Here with us this evening is the Honorable Judge Adrian G. Soud from the Fourth Judicial Circuit to bring greetings and to share information about American Founders Month. Judge Soud.
Well, good evening. And first of all, before I begin, let me say to each of you, thank you for the opportunity to be here and to see some familiar faces from the community who have been serving for a great period of time. We're very excited about the proclamation from the governor about Founders Month, about Celebrate Freedom Week. It's always intriguing, not many people know that actually September 17th is a holiday, it's Constitution Day. And so on Friday, September the 14th, we are going to go into the schools and share with our students here in Duval County important principles about the founding of our country. But I want to share with you briefly how this came to be. I had the opportunity as part of presiding in the Fourth Circuit, the Fourth Judicial Circuit is made up of Duval, Clay, and Nassau Counties. And of course, I've been born and raised in Duval County. I served for two years in Nassau County, and some wonderful men and women in Nassau County had a desire to establish a scholarship program where students could compete for scholarships by writing essays after they participated in a semester-long course, extracurricular, after-school and after-hours, on the American founding and important principles in that regard. And serving in Nassau County, in my mind, that was such a wonderful opportunity and a wonderful thing and something that I still participate with there, that I wanted to bring that to Duval County, but on a much larger scale. To engage not just students who wish to participate after school, but to engage all of the students in all of our 21 high schools, as well as our virtual high school here in Duval County, and share with them just matters surrounding the Constitution as a support to so many very hard-working teachers and to help them, to assist them, and try to engage students, engage their ears. And as I was sharing with the superintendent when she had some time to spare with me last week, engage their ears, engage their hearts, engage their minds. And by doing that, help them know more about the country in which they live, help them know more about the Constitution that's so valuable to our republic. And then to cause within them an appreciation for the country and a desire to participate in it. And that's what we're ultimately trying to do by doing this. And so how we're going about it is last year, people, I reached out to the Duval County school system and immediately was warmly embraced, which was very encouraging. And so last year on Law Day, which is May 1, in celebration of Law Day, I approached a number of folks through the Jacksonville Bar and invited them to participate. And the folks that I reached out to, not one judge, lawyer, law professor, from different backgrounds in life, from different areas of our community and our country, not one of them said no. They were eager to participate, it's a matter that they believe to be of great importance. And so this year again, after Law Day, the hope and the plan was to go to the schools once a quarter. So that students don't see us just once a year, and they see different people come in and they have no idea who this is. But the hope is that as we met these students last May, that the same students then will see us on this Friday, and they'll see us again the Thursday before Veterans Day and the Thursday before Martin Luther King Day in the third quarter, and then at a date in the fourth quarter to be determined based on testing schedules. So that they can begin to know us, hopefully, ask questions, be comfortable engaging with questions and asking for those sorts of things. And we're very appreciative of the school administration, very much to Dr. Green, also to Matt Campisi, the Executive Director, to Regional Superintendent Corey Wright, and the Coordinator Phil Little, who have been of immense value and immense help. And there are lawyers, there are judges, there are law professors, all of whom very much hope to engage and equip these students as they begin to engage their community in the years ahead. But I'm just grateful for the opportunity to be with you all, and I'm grateful for the chance to lead a group into the schools to share with our students, and we appreciate the governor and his proclamation. So we will launch from what Atlantic Coast, and they have another video of sign language. Students who are signing that same portion of the Declaration of Independence, well done. And we will launch this effort from the governor's proclamation, tying it into the Declaration of Independence, which states the principles of the founding, but the Constitution tells us how we go about it. And that's what we're hoping to invest in them, but I greatly appreciate your time.
Thank you, Judge Soud, we certainly appreciate your service as one of our judges for the Fourth Circuit, but also for helping us to celebrate American Founders Month in such a meaningful and personal way, not just for those here today in the audience, but for our students, thank you. We will now ask Principal LaShawn Streeter from Ramona Boulevard Elementary to come and share.
Good evening. To Board Chair Wright, to our honorable board members, to Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Diana Green, to our region leadership, families, friends, community, I bring you greetings from 5540 Ramona Boulevard Elementary School, where I have the distinct honor of serving as principal. I would be remiss if I didn't recognize the individuals, or some of the individuals who make wonderful work happen every day as it relates to instruction and educating the whole child. At this time, if I would, if my teachers would stand briefly so that we could recognize you. Thank you for being here. Thank you for partnering, thank you, you may be seated, thank you for partnering in the work with us. And so at this time, we'd like to just share briefly some of the wonderful things that are happening at Ramona, home of the soaring eagles. I do want to start with... Technology is great when it works. We'll start with our vision, of course, every day it is our goal to provide quality educational experiences for all students. And of course, we are charged with making sure that we're preparing and delivering strategic lessons to create an environment where learning opportunities are promoted for students to have academic and social success. I would like to speak briefly about one of our school choice options, which is logistics, which is a little bit different from some of the other school options that are available within our wonderful school district. And it just basically deals with the detail coordination of moving goods and services, whether that be through certain facilities, certain supplies, and certain individuals. At Ramona, we are proud of the fact that we have received the Schools of Hope Grant from the state of Florida. And through the Schools of Hope Grant, we're able to promote or launch the AVID program. We are one of two elementary schools in Duval County who has this opportunity to start AVID. Of course, AVID is alive and well, if you will, in some of our middle and high schools. And the emphasis this year is on instruction. And one of the things that we plan to do, or we've already started doing within the first few weeks of school, is focusing on one of the pivotal pieces, or pillars, if you will, of the AVID program, and that is through teaching students WICHER strategies, through writing, inquiry, collaboration, organization, and reading. And we're excited about merging those two entities because AVID gives us an opportunity to expose students to college and career, whereas the logistics side of things allows us to expose students to opportunities through trade and vocational experiences as well. When I shared that last week at Open House, parents were absolutely excited about the piece of exposing their students to different opportunities. We did have video available for you this evening where some of our students were sharing why they love Ramona Boulevard Elementary School. And then, of course, we had our Teacher of the Year, Ms. Angela Collins, who's here with us tonight, who shared why Ramona is special to her. I believe this is her 28th year at Ramona, and she shared what Ramona means to her as well. And so as I close, I would like to invite some of my special guests to come on up. Some of my students are here every day on the morning news. We are led by some of our students in the "I am somebody" creed. Because as you may have seen, our school theme this year is "Learning is our superpower", where we are encouraging students to be intrinsically motivated and use their special skills and talents to be the best that they can be every day. So thank you for being here, girls. And at this time, if you would please share with the "I am somebody" creed.
Do we need the microphone? You don't want to miss anything that you say.
I am somebody. I'll be stopped with my behavior and the results of my behavior and what I've become in life. Life does not accept excuses, I won't give any. I'll not let my needs to be accepted by the game keep me from doing what is right. I am somebody. I am unique, there never has been and there never will be another person like me. I don't have to pretend to be something I'm not. I am somebody. Losers let it happen, winners make it happen. Therefore, with facing the mountains, I will not quit. I'll keep on striving until I climb over, find a path through, tunnel underneath, or simply stay and turn that mountain into a gold mine. I'll do my best, I know I can, I am a winner, I am somebody.
Ms. Streeter, before you leave, I am certain Board Member Mr. Jones would like to say a few words.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I am just disappointed I don't have a T-shirt yet. I have enough, don't worry. But I just want to thank you for the work that you've done at your previous location and outstanding work that we know you're doing and will do at Ramona. I called her when I asked her, I said, "You sure you want to do this?" Because this is her first year at Ramona as a principal. And she did such an outstanding job at Annie Morgan, I think it was. So I see why they placed you at Ramona. Ramona has some challenges, but I know that with your support, staff, and your leadership, we will turn that ship around and we're on the way to A. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, now we will have communications.
When one considers the hard work that goes into educating our children, most will agree it is a labor of love. And when it comes to the couple you're about to meet, this could not be more true. This evening, we wish to honor a history-making husband and wife who have each invested well over three decades as educators in Duval County Public Schools, true servants of public education, our students, our community, and the profession of teaching. They are Mr. Harold T. Pierce and Mrs. Mary Helen Kendrick Pierce. And in honor of their contributions, the board is presenting to them two resolutions, one for Mr. Pierce and one for Mrs. Pierce. And so we begin with a resolution honoring and commending Duval County School District educator Harold T. Pierce for his decades of outstanding service to the school district and students of Jacksonville. Whereas Harold T. Pierce was born in Pensacola, Escambia County, on June 13th, 1938, at 11:19 AM. He is the son of Sidney and Irma Pierce. Harold attended Booker T. Washington Junior/Senior High School, where he graduated 16th out of a class of 164 students, where he participated in football, track, baseball, and basketball. After high school, he attended Florida A&amp;M University, where he received his Bachelor of Science degree in agricultural education in 1961. Whereas Mr. Pierce was hired in 1964 to establish the first vocational agricultural program in a black school in Duval County at Douglas Anderson Elementary Junior and Senior High School, where he also had the opportunity to serve as the assistant baseball coach. The school was closed in 1968, and he was transferred to James Walden Johnson, where he taught science until the forced integration movement caused him to be transferred to Jefferson Davis in January of 1970. Harold taught and coached a variety of sports while serving at Jefferson Davis until 1998. Whereas Harold has been fortunate to receive a number of different awards during his lifetime, such as Arlington Area J.C.'s of the Month in 1973, Police Athletic League Coach of the Year in 1980, Teacher of the Year in 1990, inducted into the Bob Hayes Hall of Fame in 2004, USA TF Official of the Year in 2007 and 2015, FHSAA Boyce Track and Field Official of the Year in 2016, and inducted into the African-American Coaches Hall of Fame in 2017. Harold joined the Mount Olive Primitive Baptist Church in 1964, where he still holds an active membership to this day and sings in the choir. Whereas Harold is the blessed husband of Mary Helen Pierce, who was also his high school and college sweetheart. He is the proud father of one son, Harold L. Pierce, and one daughter, Wanda Pierce, Wanda E. Pierce. He has three grandchildren, Deshaun Garrett, Ashley Pierce, and Ariel Pierce, and a great-grandson, Rashawn Garrett, as well as his godchildren and immediate and extended family, and friends who wish to express their tremendous gratitude for his decades of service to our school district, our students, and our city. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Duval County School Board September 10th, 2018, and this is signed by Board Chair Paula D. Wright. And finally, we also have a resolution honoring and commending Duval County School District educator Mary Helen Kendrick Pierce for her decades of outstanding service to the school district and the students of Jacksonville. Whereas Mary Helen Kendrick Pierce was born in Charlotte, North Carolina, on August 27th, 1938, to Theodore and Dorothy or Dot Gabriel, raised by Reverend Joseph and Esther Kendrick, and educated by the Charlotte Mecklenburg County school system, where she graduated from Second Ward High School. And whereas Mrs. Pierce entered, or excuse me, earned her degree at Florida A&amp;M University, where as a double major, she received a Bachelor of Science degree from FAMU in both biology and chemistry in 1964, and acquired her teaching certificate for grades six to 12. Then she began her teaching career in 1965 at Matthew W. Gilbert Junior High School. Whereas in 1969, as one of a few black teachers during the time when Andrew Jackson High School and Matthew Gilbert Junior High School combined and shared the same building, Mrs. Pierce was among several black teachers who were then brought in to hopefully make the school integration transition easier, and Mary believes that it had a definite impact on lessening the disturbance many feared would take place. After Gilbert relocated to their own facility, Mary continued her teaching career at Andrew Jackson High School for the next 34 years, touching the lives of many children and those children's children. And whereas during her tenure with the school district, Mrs. Pierce's teaching gift was not only useful and beneficial to those students within the walls of Andrew Jackson, but it was and is of great help to our community and the children of her church, Mount Olive Primitive Baptist Church, where she joined in 1964 and remains an active member. At Jackson, she served as cheerleading coach for over 15 years until her retirement in 2001, with 37 years as a valuable educator in the Duval County Public Schools District. Whereas Mary is loved and supported by her blessed husband, Harold T. Pierce, and her two children, Harold L. Pierce and Wanda E. Pierce. She has three grandchildren, Deshaun, Ashley, and Ariel, and a great-grandson, Rashawn, as well as her godchildren and immediate and extended family and friends who wish to express their tremendous gratitude for her decades of service to our district, our students, and our city. Therefore, be it resolved by the Duval County School Board September 10th, 2018, also signed by our Board Chair Paula D. Wright. And as if these achievements weren't enough, both recently celebrated their 80th birthdays. And the legacy continues, their daughter, Wanda, is currently a teacher at Andrew Jackson. So please join us in congratulating Harold and Mary Helen Pierce for their rich contributions to our students, our schools, and our community.
May I add that there is a lot of rich heritage. If you heard the information in the resolutions, Mr. and Mrs. Pierce were a part of our community at the height, at the beginning of integration. And yet, they stood tall and continued to provide the type of modeling, the type of quality education, the type of commitment to our community that we so desperately need more of today. And also, you learned a few things. I didn't know that Andrew Jackson and Gilbert shared space at one time. So there is a lot of rich information, and I was invited to what I thought was a birthday party, a couple of Saturdays. And I was invited to what I thought was a birthday party a couple Saturdays ago, and when I heard all of this information about these two star-arts in our community, I thought it would be important that we recognize their rich heritage, and in particular, starting the first agricultural education program at Douglas Anderson, which was an elementary, middle, and high school at one time. So there is a lot of history in the work that you, Mr. Pierce, and you, Mrs. Pierce, have shown and allowed us to reap the benefits of your knowledge and your commitment, and we thank you.
This concludes this evening's presentations.
Wanda Pierce, Wanda E. Pierce, daughter, teacher at Andrew Jackson, wave your hand, let everybody see. The legacy continues. Director Ed was one of her students, how about that?
You did a pretty good job on him.
Thank you all so much. Approval of the September 10, 2018 Agenda. That the Duval County School Board approved the September 10, 2018 Agenda as submitted on August 31, 2018, with the following changes. Administration and Business Services, Budget and Financial, Annual Financial Report Inclusive of Cost Report Attachment Added, Board Member Travel Item Amended, Approval of Minutes Item Amended, Human Resource Services, Professional Standards, Employee Suspension Without Pay, Carol Christensen Item Withdrawn, Recognitions, Communications, Five-Star School Awards Item Withdrawn. Is there a motion? The motion was moved by Board Member Smith Juarez and seconded by Board Member Jones. Any discussion? Seeing none, please register your vote. We're going to have to take a voice vote. I will stop. We have to register a voice for it? Oh, it's not showing, so please announce, please.
You have approved the agenda.
Was it a unanimous? Thank you.
Six oh.
By unanimous decision, you have approved this item. It is now, we're on the Chairman's Report. Tonight, I'm going to share some, focus on a problem that we have in Jacksonville, but the problem is also nationally. But we have a problem with violence in Jacksonville. And this report is going to share some data with you to help, we hope, to energize many of you, in particular, our listening audience, to a call of action. Building bridges in our community, acting now to protect our children. The national data. According to a recent analysis by the National Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, each day, 12 young people die as a result of homicide, and another 1,400 are treated in emergency rooms as a result of non-fatal assault-related injuries. Homicide is the third-leading cause of death among all combined subgroups between the ages of 10 and 24. Among those killed, 84% of the deaths were a result of a firearm. When reviewing individual subpopulations in the 10 to 24 range, homicide is the leading cause of death for African-Americans and the second-leading cause of death for Hispanics. On average, over 500,000 young people between the ages of 10 and 24 are treated yearly in emergency departments for injuries sustained from physical assaults. What you see on that chart is that about 12 young people die each day from homicide. 17% of the persons are unintentional injury, for example, motor vehicle accidents, drownings, poisoning, et cetera. 2% is from other causes. 3% congenital anomalies. 6% heart disease. 11% cancer. 13% suicide, and 17% homicide. We have a problem with violence nationally, but we also have a problem with violence here in Jacksonville. And again, I am imploring you to take some action to help us find solutions to these problems here in our local city. The national juvenile arrest rates for murder or manslaughter. In 2012, the juvenile murder arrest rate reached its lowest level in 30 years. In the past five years, the juvenile murder rate, arrest rate increased from 2.2 to 2.6 per 100,000 youth. Overall, rates continue to increase among African-American youth, while arrest rates for white youth remain stable. And on this chart that you see, you would see from 2012 to 2016, for white young, for white youth, it's basically stable. It started at 1.3% in 2012, at 2016 at 1.2%. For African-American students at the very top of the line, you would see it started in 2012 at 6.9%, went to 8.2%, dropped to 7.8%, went back up in 2015 to 8.7, and for 2016, 9.5%. We are going to have to do something with violence in our community. State data. Deaths due to gun violence among teens. Florida has a high number of teens killed or injured through gun violence. The majority of teens killed or injured, when reviewing data between January and September 2018, occurred in Duval County, Orange County, and Miami-Dade Counties. Mass shooting data are not represented as part of this geographic display. The incident which occurred at Marjory Stoneman Douglas in Broward County is not included in this data. We're only looking at individual incidences. Local data. Victims and arrests for gun violence. Juvenile victims of gun violence in Jacksonville in comparison to other large Florida cities. If you look at the chart that you may not see, but we will, it will be published on our website. If we start from the left of the chart, in Jacksonville, in 2016, the number of children between the ages of 0 to 17 injured in gun violence. Seven in 2016 in Jacksonville, then it went to 13 in 2017, to 21 in 2018. Miami, 2016, 12. 2017, dropped to 10. 2018, 3. Orlando, 2016, 2. 2017, 4. 2018, 8. There's a climb in Orlando. Palm Beach, 3 in 16, 1 in 17, and so far, in 18, 0. But look at Jacksonville, I'm going to repeat these numbers. Jacksonville went from 7 in 2016 to 13 in 2017 to 21 in 2018. Jacksonville is 2 and 1/2 times higher than the next highest city in the number of children injured by gun violence year-to-date. Juvenile arrests for gun violence in Duval County. In 2016, 2017, Duval County recorded the highest number of juvenile arrests for gun violence in the last five years. Duval County has had a 73% increase in juvenile arrests for gun violence between 2012 and 2013 school year to the 2016 to the 2017 school year. While the state only had a 15% increase, our city had a 73% increase. Among these five districts, Palm Beach County is the only county to see a larger percent increase, 82%, than Duval County. We have a problem. And it's going to take all of us to fix that problem. Florida homicide deaths among children under the age of 24. There was a slight decrease in the number of homicide deaths in Florida among children aged 1 to 24 from 2015 to 2017. In 2015, it was 364, dropped 1 in 2016 to 363, to 340 in 2017. While there was a slight decrease, the numbers remained high in the mid-300s for the past three years across the state of Florida. Deaths among students in Duval County Public Schools during 2017, 2018. For the 2017, 2018 school year, gun violence in Duval County surpassed all other causes of death among those children withdrawn from school due to death. As you can see, the 6% is other, 10% is accident, auto accident is 28%, 22% is illness, 3% is self-inflicted, and 31% is gun violence. So if we go back, so we're at, in Duval County, we have 31% of deaths among students due to gun violence. And if we go back to Slide Number 2, right here, it shows that 13% that homicide is the third-leading cause of death among all combined subgroups in ages 10 to 4, and among those killed, 84% were a result of a firearm. So here, we are at 13%. We go to Slide Number 10, we're at 31%. Almost three times more deaths due to gun violence in our city. Now, it's time for a call to action. And the action has to come from each and every one of us. Violence is a community of issue. You've heard us say it before, you've heard us be on the television talking about it, we've gone to meetings, but it is a community affair. And if we don't come together as a community and put a stop to, and begin to alleviate the violence, in particular with guns, in our city, we're going to find violence in our schools. We have been blessed to have the dedication and the resources to keep violence out of the halls of a school in Duval County. But as you can see with the increase, if we don't do something as a community, we're not going to be able to keep it out of the halls of our schools. And we don't, we don't want it in the community, and we certainly don't want it in our schools. So we're asking that each and every one of you tonight, you tweet about birthdays, you tweet and talk about every celebration, we need you tweeting, you're a Duval delegation member. Because Governor Scott did ask, and I'm going to show you the article. Governor asked, Governor Scott did ask the legislature to steer the $58 million to school districts to help them hire more campus officers, the $58 million that's sitting, that's part of the Guardian Plan. And the Guardian Plan, for all of our districts, our budgets were already, have already been approved for this school year. So there is $58 million sitting because many of the districts did not use the Guardian Plan. So the governor asks, a very relevant and important question, take the $58 million that's sitting there, give it to the districts based upon enrollment so that they will have more funding to help with safety in our schools. But incoming Senate President, Senator Galvano said, "No." He's not going to do that. He says, "The Guardian Plan is evolving, it's just starting up, so we're going to give more time." Do our children have more time? With the increase in violence that, of the data that I just shared with you in Duval County, do we have more time when we can take a proactive step to make certain as much as possible that we can keep our children and our community safe? Not only is this a community issue, but it's prevalent in the, on the northwest sides of our towns. But I'm here to tell you, I'm here to say to you, it's not sitting there, it's not staying on the north side, it's not staying on the west side. It is moving everywhere. And I know that our city is better than what these numbers say we are. I know that each of you tonight wants better, wants greater, wants something more important to ensure that the future of our children continues to be protected. So this is out of our hands as elected school board members alone. We have $58 million that can be shared across the state to help us with valuable needed resources to help curb violence, in particular, gun violence, when it comes to our students. Call your legislator. We're going to put this presentation on the website, we're going to put all of the delegation members' emails and office members on our website. We have to take it to them because they're controlling the purse strings. And we have to say to them emphatically and without a question, give the school districts the $58 million so that they can use those dollars to help with this crime, this curb of gun violence. Now, we can't speak for anybody but Duval County, and our numbers aren't looking good. So there are other steps to be taken. We're going to have a number of community meetings. I know other organizations are getting together, we're trying to have one community meeting where we come together and address this issue as a whole, so we will be releasing more information. But it's in your hands as a voter, as an electorate. You can make that phone call, you can tweet, and you can send that email and ask your Duval delegation members to say to incoming Senate, Senator Galvano, give the money to the districts and not just let it sit there. Because our children's lives and their futures are more important than allowing the money to sit there. Any Board Member would like to? Ms. Couch?
Thank you. I was actually going to say the stuff about the $58 million in my, for the record, but since it's right now, and you probably have more people watching at this time than you will later on. So there's $58 million of non-recurring funds left in this year's state budget. Only $9 million of that funding, which was a total of 67, has been used for the Coach Erin Feis Guardian Program. The governor did urge the joint legislative- The governor did urge the Joint Legislative Budget Commission, including the Senate President Galvano and the incoming Speaker Oliva, to release those funds so that a per-student portion of that could come to school districts so they could use it for safety and security, for resource officers would probably be what that funding would be spent on. If you look at what we've had to do, we've been using part-time JSO officers and, as well as our own resource officers to staff our schools, that has to come out of our district budget and also the sheriff's budget. So we share part of that cost and they will too. This would help with that, that funding. Governor Scott has made the ask to move the remaining fifty-eight million to Florida school districts to help hire more officers. And he said, quote, "We cannot let this money go to waste in Tallahassee." This money is literally just sitting there, it's a one-time allocation. So it's only there for this year. And our school year's already started and all the school district budgets have already been put together. So it's just going to sit there, and I guess in hopes, the thinking is that districts will be so desperate, they'll have to use the Ar, the Aaron Feis Guardian Funds to, to arm teachers and staff. Because it's just sitting there, it's a one-time allocation. It, it'll just get reabsorbed into the state budget if it's not used. And that seems like a travesty that we would allow this to happen. But I would also add that people contact the Joint Legislative Budget Commission. They're the group of senators and representatives that can actually make this decision. The Senate President and the Speaker have both said no, but there are other members to that joint commission, and one that actually is from North Florida, Senator Bradley is from North Florida, but there are several members listed, you can just type that in Google, it would pull it up. Joint Legislative Budget Commission Florida, put Florida, and then it'll bring the whole list up and it has their links to their emails. And those would be the folks that you would definitely wanna contact, as well as the Speaker and the Senate President, but also our Duval delegation. We elect them to be the voice, it's a representative government, we elect them to be our voice in Tallahassee, and we expect them to be our voice. And so I would encourage you to reach out to your delegation members and ask them to, to try to influence this Legislative Budget Commission as well.
Thank you, Ms. Couch. Again, it's in the hands of legislators, that's where we're receiving our funding from. But more importantly, we have to push our legislators to do what's right for children. And if you tweet, if you Facebook, if you help us to spread the word, if you put the pressure on the legislators, I assure you, everybody will get the message. But it cannot be just board members or other elected officials who are asking other elected officials, like the state legislators, to release the funds so that school districts across the state can receive as much financial support as possible to keep our children safe. In Jacksonville, for the last five, six weekends, there has been gun violence that's resulted in death of a minor. I hope that rocks you enough that you think that it is not too much to ask to send an email, to make a phone call, and to send another email and to make another phone call for the lives of our children and for the safety of our community. At this time, we will have the superintendent's report. Dr. Green.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do want to just echo your report that how important this is. And some of the things that we are doing as a school district is also to ensure that our students, when they come to school, that they are safe. And at the next board meeting, we will be bringing our recommendations for the funding, the grant for facilities, security, and the items that we've gotten through listening to our high school principals. Director Edwards and I, this week, will finish our last two schools of the twenty-one high schools and bring that before the board to share with the community the pieces that we can share with the community, how we are continuing to upgrade our facilities and ensure that our students are safe. Superintendent's report for September tenth. On Friday, we had the State of the Schools Address at the Prime Osborne Convention Center. It was very well attended. I want to congratulate and thank our high schools because they sent students over to, one, provide lunch through the Culinary Arts Program. We had First Coast, Frank H. Peterson, Mandarin, Sandalwood, Terry Parker, William N. Raines, and Westside High Schools provide the culinary arts and the food, and I think everyone left satisfied. We wanna also thank the JROTC program at Robert E. Lee High School. And we had music, oh, okay, let me make sure I don't, from La Villa School of the Arts for the string quartet. And we wanna thank the five thousand men mentors and mentees from First Coast High School. It was a great opportunity to share with the community how strong our schools are and the progress that we, that we are making. And I kinda posed the question, how do you see it? Is the glass empty, half-full, or is it moving towards being full? And I was encouraging people based on the presentation that the glass is probably more than half-full, it's headed in the right direction. And we have wonderful things happening in our schools, and I just wanna thank the staff and the staff at the Prime Osborne for doing a fantastic job putting this event together. We are honored to work with Beaver Chevrolet. They are giving away six cars to honor six local heroes, and they want to recognize a hero teacher in our community. So I encourage you to go to the website, this PowerPoint will also be on our website so that you can go and nominate your favorite teacher, or get friends to nominate their favorite teacher, and then vote. I believe they will complete the drawing at the end of November. So I look forward to seeing which one of our hero teachers will get a free car. Kind of tied into what Chairwoman Wright indicated about the violence happening in our community, many people know about the incident that happened after the football game at Raines High School. That tragedy came about on a Friday evening when young people are supposed to be enjoying a football game, whether they're cheering, playing in the band, whether they're playing football, or they're just there. As I told Director Edwards when I was in high school, I was just there, I wanted to be around my friends. And because of that incident, we made a decision for, to, for the remainder of this football season, those high attendance games, to move those games to either early in the afternoon at five-thirty on a Thursday or Friday, or on Saturday morning. And so each month, we will put out the new schedule on our website, and this is the schedule for the remaining month of September. And we only have one game, and that's First Coast at Rebaugh High School, Saturday, September twenty-second at ten AM. We are working with the I'm a Star Foundation for, for two events happening this month to support our homeless education department. This is three thousand for three thousand. We have probably a little bit over three thousand students that have been identified as homeless. And this program is to recognize three thousand seconds of hope. And three thousand seconds of hope actually equals fifty minutes. And so on September fifteenth, if you're not doing anything, come out to Hemming Park at ten AM. And I'm a Star Foundation has students running this organization, and they will be in charge of the program. And their whole goal is to raise money to help students that are identified as homeless. The second part of this program is the celebrity basketball game on Saturday, September twenty-second at Paxton High School. I heard Mr. Jones was gonna be on the court. Was that a rumor, Mr. Jones? Oh, okay.
No, he was on the court.
Well, I, I was told number nineteen that I see laying that up, that was you, Mr. Jones. But it's sponsored by Chartwell's K-12, all proceeds, again, are gonna benefit the homeless students. I think Ms. Chairwoman Wright played last year. Didn't make any points, but she played, I understand.
You understood it right.
Oh, okay, are you playing this year? And Ms. Couch, and Ms. Couch? Cheerleader, I, yes, I all, it, it almost, it made dress code just barely, I understand, Ms. Couch. But it's a great opportunity to come out and enjoy some fun, but at the same time donating to a worthy cause. And we're gonna round out the month of September with Dads Take Your Child to School Day on September twenty-sixth, two thousand and eighteen. Duval County has been one of the leading school districts in this event that is held every year in the state of Florida. I encourage every father, whether your father, grandfather, guardian, or you wanna be one, engage with your children and come to school on that day. But allow that to just be a kickoff of being more engaged in our schools. I will tell you everything that Chairwoman Wright talked about. Much of it can go back to the, the missing fathers in the homes. And we need our dads to dedicate themselves to their children and engage themselves in their academic progress because research shows that when you do that, your child is going to be successful. And we have a hundred and thirty thousand reasons that we need dads to, to show up on September twenty-sixth, two thousand and eighteen. And with that, we're gonna close with our video. We are hashtag Team Duval. This video was played at the State of the Schools event, and it's on our website. I'm going to ask, along with you tweeting, what Chairwoman Wright indicated, we want you to put this on your Facebook page, on your Instagram, and pass this information along because, again, for us to cure the ills of, of what's happening in our community, it, it will take all of us.
A team can be best defined as a group of people with different skills and different tasks, working together to achieve a common goal.
I am Team Duval.
I am Team Duval.
A strong team has a defined purpose. Our purpose and promise is to constantly focus on our students, their progress, and their success.
I am Team Duval.
I am Team Duval.
This team believes in synergy, meaning we are only better together, and together, we can achieve more.
I am Team Duval.
I am Team Duval.
Our team is always striving to get better because even though we've had our share of wins, we won't be satisfied until we've closed the achievement gap and we see every single student succeed.
I am Team Duval.
I am Team Duval.
Great relationships are key to our team's success. By building strategic community partnerships, we're bringing more support and resources to the classroom and developing the whole child.
I am Team Duval.
I am Team Duval.
Finally, winning teams are built on great leadership. We work hard to make sure our schools are empowered with leaders who accept accountability and understand the team is only as strong as its vision.
I am Team Duval.
I am Team Duval.
We need you on Team Duval because working together, every student can succeed.
We are Team Duval.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Dr. Green. We are now on the public comment portion of our agenda. Those wishing to address the board must fill out a blue speaker's card. The board welcomes your comments or matters that are before the board for consideration. It is not the board's intent to respond this evening, but to use the input in our deliberations. To give everyone appropriate respect and courtesy, we ask that the audience refrain from audible comments or applause. When you come to the microphone, please state your name for the record, please limit your comments to three minutes. When the green light in front of me starts blinking, you will have a minute remaining. When the light turns yellow, you will have thirty seconds remaining. When it turns red and the buzzer sounds, your time will be up. If your concerns exceed that time, you may present written comments to the board. You are asked to refrain from references to specific individuals and to follow expectations of civil discourse. Please remember that speaker cards were only accepted up until six-twenty PM. Thank you for taking your time to address the board. The first speaker is Megan Tabor, followed by James Gilman, followed by Catherine Pierce.
Good evening.
Hi. My name's Megan Tabor. I'm speaking in reference to number thirteen on the agenda, I believe.
Yes, ma'am.
I've chosen to speak today in reference to the erroneous charge against me of unprofessional conduct. There is much misinformation matriculating about this matter, so first and foremost, I'd like to give an actual account of the testing situation that the, that it references. There's been a great deal of passing the buck, so to speak, in the subsequent investigation. However, I refuse to blame anyone else for what occurred that day as I have been blamed. In the week leading up to the state and district testing at Fletcher High School, I was tasked on a daily basis with assisting the testing setup. I am responsible for the logistics of the six, of our sixty-four computer carts, which equates to almost two thousand laptops in our building. In fact, teachers constantly rely on me for testing and technology assistance as evidenced by emails in the day in question, as well as other heavy testing days. Because of my reliability and responsibilities, I'm often given a list of tests and asked to handle the room assignments and technology in a testing situation. I submitted documentation to professional standards to that effect, which included the authorization to handle the Florida Virtual School room assignment and technology during one day of testing, May eighth, twenty-seventeenth. I was called to the portable, specifically P fourteen, which was an assigned testing room, much like many rooms that day. There were nineteen separate tests happening that day and rooms. And I was asked to sort out an issue that was unfolding regarding the proctors, the students, and technology for testing. I began immediately rectifying the issues at hand, including the proctor on her phone to the district testing director while students were getting set up, students on cellphones making calls in the room, the fact that none of them could sign on to the computers, helping the proctor generating the testing IDs, getting new laptops due to technology failure, and pointing out the instructions to the proctors in the manual. During the morning, I also moved a student from one testing room to another to de-escalate a growing problem with the students' distress, as well as her mother being present as a teacher. I moved the student to the media center, which was another designated testing room. Neither the rectification of the testing issue with technology nor the movement of, of the students were done of my own volition and were a result of directives from admin and the testing coordinator. I would not have acted otherwise as my primary job responsibility was coaching, and I ensured authorization via school phone. My involvement with that student and situation was less than thirty minutes on one day of testing. I would like to point out that the movement of students between rooms for the best fit before beginning a test was common practice by both the testing coordinator and the teacher assistant at that time. I have more information in a written document I'd like to, I can see that I'm almost out of time, so I don't wanna go over your time.
Ms. Justine, we'll, we'll take that. Thank you, Ms. Tabor.
Thank you very much.
James Gilman, followed by Catherine Pierce and Holly Ramsey.
Good evening, my name is James Gilman. Thank you for taking my comments. Fear lies like a shroud upon our schools. At first blush, our schools are not much different than prisons. Six feet in higher fences, gates and doors locked, access via single door and security guards with weapons prominently displayed. Even worse, this loss in liberty for our children was preceded by a loss of many lives in Parkland, Florida. We have unable rights of life, liberty, and pursuit of happiness. And when ever any form of government becomes destructive to these ends, it is the right of the people to alter or abolish it. I wanna exercise the right to abolish it. I wanna exercise the right to alter our government. I cannot do it alone. I seek to help everybody in this room and those watching on TV, that we must act in a brave and bold manner to protect our children and our nation. The MSD Act does more to infringe on our children's unable rights than protect them. It fails to hold accountable those people that have directly and indirectly infringed upon their and our rights. And it redirects dollars that can be invested in more accretive activities. This is not the first time a government entity has incurred cost from the use of unsafe manufactured products by its citizens. A large group of U.S. government entities successfully sued manufacturers two decades ago. This renowned lawsuit is known as the Tobacco Master Settlement Agreement. Should not our district sue the gun manufacturers? Regrettably, we will most likely have to sue our state and federal government as the majority of elected officials have arguably allowed themselves to be corrupted by the gun industry. For example, the MSD Act funnels money to the gun industry. More guns, more ammo. Congress passed HJ Resolution forty less than two years ago that made it easier for someone with documented mental health issues to purchase a gun. In reference to the latter, in two thousand and eight, the Supreme Court, in the renowned D.C. versus Heller opinion, which reaffirms or affirms that a gun may be owned for self-defense, the court states that the right is not unlimited, that's the Second Amendment, is not unlimited. For example, the majority writes those with mental illness should not be allowed to have a gun. In short, our nation's highest court says these people, there must, excuse me, the court says there must be people restrictions. Regrettably, the burden falls on us. As I see it, school districts are the only avenue to effect meaningful and lasting change. I encourage Duval County Public Schools to sue the gun manufacturers. I'm confident other districts will join. We have case law at our back. I believe, and hopefully you do, that we must act to protect our unable rights, as your earlier comments stated, of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness so we can remove the shroud of fear from our schools and, more importantly, from our city. This is, as you pointed out, madam, that this is not just a school problem. This is a Duval County's problem and a nation's problem.
Thank you so much, Mr. Gilman.
Thank you.
Catherine Pierce, followed by Holly Ramsey and Michael Hall.
Good afternoon. My name is Catherine Pierce. I, I'm, I'm an alumnus of Robert E. Lee High School, uh, class of nineteen sixty-seven during the period which integration had not occurred. I, I'm also a, have been a, uh, substitute teacher at Duval County and currently am a substitute teacher. And I'm also currently employed, uh, as a cafeteria worker at Terry Parker High School part-time. And I, I'd like to applaud the chair for setting the tone by, uh, presenting the, this is, uh, the critical issue that we're facing right now in Duval County is the gun violence. And I had a few comments to add in addition to, uh, support your call to action. One regarding the, the shooting that happened at Rains. I don't think enough has been made of the fact that this shooting occurred outside the school and that, uh, the idea that it could have been prevented or that the idea of trying to make our students safe by building our schools into fortresses, armed camps, uh, with more police with guns is an approach that's going to ultimately address the community-wide neighborhood issue. And I, I'd like to say that, uh, I think also the, um, the idea that, I, I support the call to action in terms of, uh, getting the fifty-eight million dollars administered to the school districts to, to address the issues of public safety, of neighborhood safety. I personally don't support the idea of that putting more police in the schools is the way to go at that. And I, I feel like it's another example of, uh, the, trying to police your way out of this problem, which is a bigger societal problem, which has to do with, I mean, this, I wanna point to the data that, uh, that was presented. There's the extreme disparities of the African Americans' number of children that are being killed and number of children that are being arrested compared to, uh, the situation of the mass incarceration of African Americans. And I'd like to say that, uh, and if we can't address these kinda issues, we're not gonna be able to police our way out of, out of this crisis. So, uh, thank you very much for your attention, and I hope that, uh, also closing the gun show loophole is some action that needs to be taken. You can urge your city council people and congresspeople to, to take action.
Thank you, Ms. Pierce. Holly Ram, Ramsey, followed by Micah Hall and Chris Kiernan.
Hello, my name is Holly Ramsey. I am an activist slash organizer with Take 'Em Down Jacksonville, um, Jacksonville Progressive Coalition, and the Northside Coalition of Jacksonville. Um, I agree with what Kathy just said, and more cops does not equal less crime. But tonight, I really wanna talk about attending a school named after a Confederate gen, general. Put yourself in the shoes of an African American child. Can you look into the eyes of that young child and convince him that a mural or a statue of, say, Robert E. Lee is there to encourage them? Do you think they will feel inspired and hopeful about the story of Robert E. Lee? Cause here in Duval County, we have five schools named after Confederates. Um, I could go through and name them all, but I'm not, Robert E. Lee High School is one of them. Um, recently, thankfully, in recent years, Nathan Bedford Forest High was changed to West Side High by students, grassroots organizers, parents, Take 'Em Down Jackson, many members of the community. Thank you to everyone who aided in that. Um, students should have a voice. What about the voice of our children? Students are complaining that they're not being taught the truth or the full history, specifically pertaining to the Civil War. African American students attending Robert E. Lee will tell you that they were taught that Lee was one of the greatest generals who ever lived, and he fought for the South, for the Confederacy. Students should have been taught that Lee was a slave owner. Robert E. Lee said that blacks are immeasurably better off here than in Africa, morally, socially, and physically. He goes on to say, "The painful discipline they are undergoing is necessary for their instruction as a race." Sounds a lot like another leader in history, and his name's Adolf Hitler. Hitler justified extermination of the Jews, just as Lee justified enslavement of, of the black race. Where are the schools named after Hitler? If you were Jewish, could you send your child to Adolf Hitler High School? Why do we have schools named after terrorists and losers if we are trying to teach our children to achieve and succeed? The Civil War is ultimately the African American Holocaust. How can we expect African American children to feel comfortable, safe, equal, and loved while we hang white supremacy over their heads? I'd be angry too, if I were them. We can't expect them to learn and excel and get excited over education when we force them to go to school, names after a man who once enslaved their ancestors. Do what's right. We should change the names of these schools that are named after Confederates. We need to take 'em down. But on the violence issue, we should ask Lenny Curry, the mayor, on why he is giving over one-third of the city budget to JSL? Because more cops doesn't equal less crime. Ask Sheriff Williams why seventy percent of the homicides from last year went unsolved, and why he doesn't, um, stop his officers from racially profiling black residents and the three porous zip codes. Why aren't they investing in the working class instead of targeting them? And investing in infrastructure. We need to invest in our youth and our working class. Take 'em down.
Thank you, Ms. Ramsey. Micah Hall, Chris Kiernan, and Michael Anderson.
Good evening. My name is Micah Hall. Dear board members, I am a student at Central Riverside Elementary School. We have been told that our resources are being cut in half. For all the students at Crescente, resources are important and very fun for us. We learn more than what we, you think we do. Art is important because it's art. Music is important because it's music. And PE is important because it's PE. Resources are more than just math and reading in a more fun way. They're teaching you how to golf, paint, or play a variety of instruments. All the resources combined are teaching us as much about life as we are, learn in our regular classes. We love to go to PE and see how much we have improved on our Pacer tests, or art, and see how much we have improved in painting, or music, and learn more about different composers. Resources combined are my favorite subjects during the school day. They even beat lunch and recess. And I love lunch and recess. If resources are cut, then all the students will be sad. Mr. Coleman, our previous music teacher, taught us to be kind and help each other when we need help. He taught me that keeping time in music also applies to keeping time in life, like making sure I have time for homework even though I want to play on the Xbox. Mrs. Woodleaf, my art teacher, taught me that I am creative and life is boring if we don't think creatively. I didn't even know I was creative until she told me I was. Coach told us that it was important to be active because if we just sit on the couch watching TV, then you are missing out on a whole bunch of fun. My mom says that some studies show resources help with math and reading, and studies tell her that my test scores are better if I have other activities throughout the day. Adults seem to think those test scores are pretty important, so keeping resources makes sense if they can help improve those scores. My parents chose Central Riverside for my sister and me, mainly because of their strong resource teachers. My mom said she knew they would stretch me. I say math, science, and reading are really good at teaching me what I don't know. Art, PE, and music show me things I do know, but I didn't know I could do. I have a feeling if you take a pencil, make some lines on a page, and turn those lines into shapes that become letters that become words, you value art and all the other resources a lot, too. Please give them back to us.
Thank you, young Mr. Micah Hall. Uh, Chris Kiernan, followed by M, Michael Anderson and Cara Lane.
He was very good.
He was great.
Hi there.
Hi.
Um, I just kinda wanted to, um, address some of the things that you had talked about. Um, I did notice, this isn't the top of the list, but this is something I would like to address. Um, you did, uh, mention, um, the homeless and the homeless students. Um, I wasn't sure if you were all aware. I'm sure you are, for the four hundred thousand dollars that's going into the dog park behind the public library downtown, um, that currently we have a lot of the homeless students and their families staying in. So I think that maybe we should try to address that issue. If you guys are gonna be talking about the students, you also need to be talking about their parents, in my opinion. Um, I wanna also kind of, um, talk a little bit about the voice of the kids. Um, I've noticed that we're talking a lot about, you know, violence in the schools, but are we asking the children any questions? Um, there's been a lot of community activists that have gone out and spoken to a lot of the kids that are out at Rains, and they have been very transparent about the fact that they have been blamed for the violence there. Those children are not to blame. And I wanna make it very clear that we are not listening to our children. They are not being heard and they do not feel, feel as if they've been heard. Um, it's, it's sad, but it's on us. And we need to make a change, and we need to ask them what makes them feel comfortable. We need to ask them what they would like to be protected, not how we feel that they need to be protected. I wanna also address the, the fact that you all have said that we need to have fathers, um, in the picture. And in my opinion, in order to keep dads in the picture, we need to stop arresting them. Um, I feel as if there is a huge problem in this city, taking the fathers away from the children and then blaming the family because of it. Um, that needs to be addressed. I know this is a school board, but if you guys are going to mention that, you need to also understand what the reasoning is behind it. I'm not here to patronize you. I am bringing light to it. I haven't been able to say everything that I wanted to say, but I do feel this, that more cops is not less crime. Um, there is no way that fighting violence with violence is the answer. Getting more cops in the schools with guns is not the answer. I have a girlfriend of mine, and her daughter is in the schools, and she sent me a picture of what these, these, uh, security guards are doing. They are sitting around on their phones during lunch, when they should be watching over these children. Now, we're gonna add more people with guns? That doesn't make any sense. If we have the resources there, we need to implement them and train them accurately. I'm very upset with this systemic problem we have in our city. There is a huge problem with gun violence. And if it takes me standing up here every time that I have a possibility to do it, I will. You guys have seen my eleven-year-old daughter, Grace. She's come up here and spoken to you multiple times. Um, she's, reads her poem that she feels.
Thank you.
Um, I'm gonna be submitting more information. Can I get all of your email?
Thank you, Ms. Kiernan.
It's on the website.
Thank you, Ms. Kiernan, and, and someone will, will reach out to you to help you to get the information you need. Michael Anderson, followed by Cara Lane.
Good evening. Uh, I'll say this. I, I think I heard enough, more than enough, actually. I was really quite disappointed with some of the stuff that I'm hearing tonight. Uh, I nearly walked out. For one, while the, the, uh, the pie charts and the statistics were nice, um, the fact that the matter is that you're talking about decades-old problem. We all know what's causing, uh, gun violence in Jacksonville. None of this stuff is new to us. But your leadership is a complete failure. I'm not impressed with the leadership of the chair, the superintendent, and then the members of the school board. The Jacksonville Progressive Coalition has contacted the superintendent's office, not once, but twice, and we never heard back. And while we, we ourselves went out to, uh, Rains, and then we, we go to Rains and we see, what we see is, we see the memorial to the victim filled with trash. There was nothing that, no real, uh, the sense and the scenery of, that we got from the students that were there at Rains was, oh, this is just another day in Jacksonville. This is not normal. I grew up in Jacksonville. We've always had a problem with violence, but I could guarantee you that ten, twenty years ago in Jacksonville, our problem with violence wasn't dealt with guns. We had a, our problem with violence was literally fights in Jacksonville. Now you, now we having more assets and, uh, accessibility to two guns from people who shouldn't even have them, including kids. But the leadership here is blaming parents who are working two, three jobs, parents with one, one, one-parent homes for, uh, for community violence, and saying that it's a community problem and not a problem with the leadership. Now, this, this, these are the same people, same elected officials on this school board who are coddled with the mayor in order to, in order to have a, a response to, to the gun violence that happened at Rains by treating, instead of having, uh, school to prison pipeline, you now say, you know, it's just gonna turn our ki, our, our schools into prison. These kids at Rains came up to me, I have ten things going on, all right? These kids at Rains came up to me and they tell me, our, the response from our school board isn't enough. Our principals are literally crawling into the auditorium and blaming us for that shooting that went down. They feel like they are getting blamed. So, what I, and what I'm hearing from tonight is when this, when us, the chair, literally put the blame on the community for the violence that is happening. I'm inclined to believe them. I'm not inclined to believe anything that this, the school board is saying to address this issue. Because honestly, this could, this could be easily be dealt with if you just legislated with the political will that you all say that you have. You all say, you know, legislators, that we all know, we all know how to vote, we all know how to cast a ballot. But you all were elected to lead, and you all were elected to, uh, propose solutions to these problems. I'm not seeing any of that. And I'm quite tired of, uh, coming to these meetings and hearing the same old rhetoric that has been put out before the people for the last thirty, forty, fifty years since consolidation. So, you can, if, if, because you're, because you have no innovative ideas, because you have no agenda, you are saying that it is now the blame should be on the community for the gun violence when you, you yourself have failed to lead. And so, yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Cara Lane.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Cara Lane. I am seventeen years old, and I am currently a senior at Robert E. Lee High School. How many students that go to this school don't know who Robert E. Lee was? Almost all of them. We've been taught that Robert E. Lee was a general who stood for what was right. He stood for African Americans. When the history behind Robert E. Lee was, he was a general who was willing to not stand to be a leader, but to follow the ideas and choices everyone else made and to make a foundation based off of inequality. Do I believe that Robert E. Lee High School is a bad school? Not at all. I've went there all four years. I've had my ups and downs with the schools, been through different situations that weren't the best. But I am an all-around student, involved in dual enrollment in JRCC, athletics, art clubs, weightlifting, and many more clubs and teams. I believe our community is just blind to the violence and the history that isn't being taught at the school. We talk about the murals and that we put in the school, when the murals that are being painted on this school currently in this day are mural, murals of the General Robert E. Lee with swords on a horse fighting. are mu- murals of the General Robert E. Lee with swords on a horse fighting in a war. And we're not supposed to, we're not supposed to be influenced by the violence in that statement. The violence of him standing in a war, fighting a battle against African-Americans. We're not supposed to be seeing that swords on our walls in the hallways that we walk through every single day is okay? It's not okay at all. We're seeing this picture of what's supposed to be memorialized when why memorialize it in a school of students that don't know what it is? Why not teach the history behind it, then put it up and see how the community feels? If the community doesn't know the history behind it, not, they're not gonna understand how it's hurting the students that do know what it is. Um, being a part of N J R O T C, I participate in different color guard events around the community. Um, particularly September seventh, the color guard event at the prize, Prime Orsborn Convention Center. I was called that afternoon to see if I could come in and do the color guard event. When I showed up in my uniform, what my instructor specifically told me that I have to train another person to take my spot in the color guard event, who needed to be issued a uniform, and to be taught how to do the color guard, instead of putting me the event, in the event, because he has a problem with my weight. Because he has a problem with who I am and how I look in the uniform. He took me out of a color guard.
Thank you, Ms. Lane. If you have any further information you could share in writing? Thank you. We are now on the portion of the, um, comments from employee organizations. Uh, I see in, okay, I do see a couple of employee organizations reps, but no one wishes to speak tonight, okay? Thank you, um. Uh, comments from parent organizations. Please share.
Good evening, Chair Person Wright, school board members, and Dr. Green. My name is Teresa Rogers. I am the first vice president of the Duval County Council of P T As, and tonight I am reporting on behalf of our president, Felita Tutt. The D C C P T A has been hard at work all summer, attending the National P T A Leadership Convention, June twentieth through twenty-third, as well as the Florida State P T A Leadership Conference and Convention, July thirteenth through sixteenth. In addition, we have been training the presidents and treasurers for all of our Duval County local units to ensure that they are apprised of P T A, D C P S, and I R S rules and ready to handle the responsibilities of their positions. A few events we have coming up. Tuesday, September twenty-fifth, D C C P T A is hosting a program on suicide prevention and mental health aimed at helping parents and P T As become more proactive in helping to find solutions. And finally, on Sa- Saturday, October thirteenth, the D C C P T A will hold a workshop at Eugene Butler Middle School, offering more than a dozen classes designed to improve and diversify the skillsets of our local unit leaders. Um, information regarding the September twenty-fifth, um, event is on our website now, D C C P T A dot org, and more information regarding the October thirteenth workshops will be forthcoming. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other, um, comments from parent organizations? Okay, seeing none, thank you. Um, before we move forward to the approval of the minutes, I, I think it's, it's important that, uh, I take an opportunity to do a recap of, um, occurrences after the unfortunate shooting at Raines High School because of the, some of the comments that were shared tonight. And, um, Mr. Jones, Superintendent, Dr. Green, and, and myself, we were actually on the campus, uh, the night of the shooting. Um, so we met with the, the, the families, um, uh, Monday morning. Um, we actually prayed with the families the night of the ev- of the unfortunate, um, event, uh, Monday morning. I was at Raines at six A M. I met, uh, with the students, uh, at Raines High School. I was there to hear the conversation that, uh, Mr. Hall, the principal of Raines, had with the students. And I'm, I'm, I'm a little, I, I just wanna make it, make it clear that the superintendent and as a board, we are doing our jobs. We are to educate. We are reaching out. We've, we've had extensive conversation with Director Glover. Uh, Glover, uh, excuse me. Director Edwards, um, and, and, and the sheriff's office in terms of the sheriff's responsibility for keeping our community safe. And we are working, yes, we are working with the relevant organizations to make certain that our students remain safe while they're in our buildings, and we're working with them to, uh, to, to make certain that the students arrive safely and return home safely. And I want to assure the public that organizations are not allowed to walk into our schools and have conversations with students. I wanna make that clear because tonight what, what some of the conversation was, I went to the school. Now, I don't know if they're talking with students, uh, at the end of the day when kids are leaving campus or on their way to campus. But I want to assure that the superintendent and this board takes the safety of our children very important. But we also, in terms of staff, was the first group of people that interacted with the students during that unfortunate incident, the shooting outside of the school, as well as on the very first day of the return of the schools, uh, or a return of the students to the schools. Because it was not just a, a point of returning to the school safely, but we made certain that grief counselors were available, that psychologists were there to help with the grieving process and to aid students who needed more than just a, an opportunity to vent, so that services could be offered to them, not just that day, but for those students that needed assistance beyond that day. So, quite naturally, if they needed more assistance, they are still in contact with people that can help them emotionally to deal with the loss of the life of a friend or a classmate. So, I just wanna make certain that we, we are doing everything within our power to make certain that we are engaging with students because we are. We engaged that night, we engaged that Monday morning and that following week, and we are still engaging. So we are in conversations with, with students. But yes, we are going to work with the relevant organizations uh, to ensure that we collaborate as a community to deal with this very community issue. It is a community issue, and it has to be dealt with each of us working together. But let me share one thing with you. Violence begins with words. So it's how we speak to each other, it's how we respond to each other that can lead to further violence. So I'm asking each of us, as we work toward a solution to alleviate the violence that is present in our community, let's greet and meet each other with kind words so that we come together and find a solution and not point fingers. Pointing fingers is not going to solve the problem. There are a lot of solutions out there, but we have to do it. And again, I reiterate that we are engaging students. And we do not allow groups to simply walk into the buildings and talk with students. We do not allow individuals to simply walk into the buildings and talk with students during the school day and after school either. So we are going to continue with our plan of action. And you heard earlier tonight that the superintendent is gonna share additional information next month about some of the additional, uh, um, plans that were, uh, pulled together after that incident that we can share for safety concerns for our children. There is no greater concern that this board and this superintendent has as a collective body than the safety of our children. Number one. The safety of our children is the most important aspect. Because if they don't feel safe, it hampers learning. If they don't feel safe, they may, it hampers attendance. So I just want to assure that the public understands people aren't allowed to just simply walk into the building and begin to have conversations with our children. And we want everybody to be involved in this process. And if you have concerns about the, the issue, please have taken the opportunity to reach out to us as board, but you also have the Jacksonville Sheriff's Office, who is responsible for, uh, safety within the community, and help us come up with a solution. But I want to clear that up based upon comments that were made at the microphone tonight. We are now on the approval of minutes. That the Duval County School Board approved the minutes for the meetings listed in the agenda item. July thirty-first, twenty eighteen, special board meeting. August seventh, twenty eighteen, regular board meeting. August fourteenth, twenty eighteen, board workshop. August fifteenth, twenty eighteen, student expulsion hearing. August twenty-first, twenty eighteen, special board meeting. August twenty-first, twenty eighteen, board workshop and committee meeting. Is there a motion?
Summed up.
Second.
The motion was moved by Board Member Grimes and seconded by Board Member Couch. Any discussion? Seeing none, please register your vote. By your actions, you have approved this item six zero. Consent with comments, there are no consent.
Excuse me, approval of the consent agenda?
Thank you. Even with my glasses, I missed that. Uh, approval of consent agenda. Are there any items to place on the discussion i- uh, agenda? Seeing none. Is there a motion?
Summed up.
Second.
The motion was moved by Board Member Grimes and seconded by Board Member Jones. Any discussion? Seeing none, please register your vote. By your actions, you have approved this item six zero. There are no consent with comments. Uh, discussion agenda. Agreement to S C Schultz Center for Teaching and Leadership. That the Duval County School Board approved the use of the Schultz Center for Teaching and Leadership for various functions as approved by the superintendent in an aggregate amount not to exceed one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Dr. Green, is this your recommendation?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Is there a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
The motion was moved by Board Member Jones and seconded by Vice Chair Hershey. Uh, Mrs. Smith-Warres, you want to speak to this item?
Thank you, Chairman. Um, I registered similar sentiment last year, and so won't belabor it. But, um, in a budget year when we have had to cut staff and, and services to children and, and particularly academic services in the neighborhood of forty percent, um, I cannot support paying for space. Um, I absolutely appreciate that staff has been responsive to these concerns and that, um, last year's, um, contracted services for this particular item came in well under budget. Um, and I know that the, that staff has committed to the same this year. Um, I, I also encourage staff and the board to utilize our own facilities or, um, other partner facilities that might be available to us free of charge as much as possible, and do appreciate, um, that that has also been, um, that I, that staff has kept an eye to that request as well. Um, but that being said, I, I won't be supporting the item. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any further comments? Vice Chair Hershey.
I appreciate the concerns brought up by, uh, Board Member, uh, Smith-Warres. However, I think that we have a responsibility to teach, uh, to treat teachers as professionals and give them the opportunity to, to, um, have opportunities to expand and grow in their profession in a professional setting. Uh, so I do support this.
Any other? Seeing none, please register your vote. By your actions, you have approved the agenda item five to one. With, uh, Board Member Smith-Warres registering negative. We are now on Board Member Travel. That the Duval County School Board approved the following Board Member Travel. September twelfth through the thirteenth, twenty eighteen, Live Oak, Florida, Florida School Boards Association Board of Director Training, Board Member Grimes. September twentieth, twenty eighteen, Kissimmee, Florida, Florida School Boards Association Proposed Twenty-Nineteen Legislative Platform, Vice Chairman Hershey and Board Member Jones. Is there a motion?
Summed up.
Second.
The motion was moved by Board Member Grimes and seconded by Board Member Couch. Uh, any discussion? Seeing none, please register your vote. By your actions, you have approved this agenda item six zero. That the Duval County School Board approved the following superintendent travel. October ninth through the eleventh, twenty eighteen, Denver, Colorado, Jacksonville Chamber Leadership Trip. October twenty-fourth through the twenty-eighteen, twenty eighteen, Baltimore, Maryland, Council of Great City Schools Fall Conference. Is there a motion?
Summed up.
Second.
The motion was moved by Board Member Grimes and seconded by Board Member Smith-Warres. Any discussion? Seeing none, please register your vote. By your actions, you have approved this item six zero. We are now on for the record. Board Member Smith-Warres.
Thank you, Chairman. Um, I want to begin this evening by welcoming everyone back. I know it's been, um, several weeks into school, but, um, first board meeting since school began. So, um, thank you to all of our district staff, our principals, our teachers, um, our bus drivers, our cafeteria workers, as we heard from on this evening, um, everyone who contributes to making our schools run smoothly. Very much appreciate, um, the return to school. Um, I also wanna briefly mention, um, that we are all thinking, and, and I am certainly thinking of our friends on the North and South Carolina coasts, um, as they prepare for Hurricane Florence. Um, we were last year, this time, um, dealing with the aftermath of Hurricane Irma. Um, that is still very present for us, and so certainly are thinking of those um, who are making those preparations now. Um, I had opportunity to visit the Mayo Spark Program. Um, this is a program that allows our students to work alongside Mayo researchers and scientists in real-time, um, development of, um, pharmaceuticals, um, new treatments and solutions for cancer, for Parkinson's, for dementia, um, and to see and hear from the um, and to see and hear from the students in what seemed to me at times a foreign language about their research and their work that they're doing. Um, knowing and having family members who have suffered from these conditions was incredibly moving and inspiring. And I look forward to, uh, continued partnership and expansion of that program. Um, I want to give an early congratulations to our summer graduates who will have their commencement tomorrow evening. Um, while many students went off for summer break or, um, had their commencements at the end of last year, these students have been working diligently, um, and instructors have been working with them, alongside them to make sure that they earn their high school diplomas. And I certainly congratulate them for that work. Um, and then finally, uh, this evening, I want to mention that in addition to Founder's Month that the Chair mentioned earlier, this evening, that September is also National Suicide Prevention Month. Um, we saw that of the deaths of, uh, children across the U.S. that eleven percent of those are children who succumb to, um, mental health conditions that results in death. And so, um, I encourage us as we think about the expansion of our mental health programs here, as we think about the health, safety, security, well-being of our students. Um, and we know that there are, are local victims that were represented in some of the numbers and the statistics that we saw this evening, that we remember the importance of mental well-being, of mental health, of kindness, um, and compassion and reducing stigma as we, um, also observe National Suicide Prevention and Awareness Month in the month of September. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Smith-Warres. Board Member Couch?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I just want to reiterate that there is fifty million dollars sitting in the state budget that could be redirected to help pay for the unfunded mandates that have been cast upon districts across the state. And it's just sitting there. It's a one-time use of funds. Um, and this would help alleviate not only Duval County Public Schools, but also the Sheriff's Budget because he is, um, expending some of his resources on the requirements. Um, the best people to contact would be the Florida Joint Legislative Budget Commission. All of the members are listed. If you Google it, it'll come online. Um, I also want to say, um, thank you to all of the culinary arts programs that, um, provided the food at the state of the schools and also LaVilla for the, the music that they provided. It was a great way to showcase our students and all of the great programs that we have. And it was pretty cool to see each school have their own table set up with the different food that they provided and they all worked together. So it was, uh, it's pretty impressive. Um, I've had the opportunity to visit so far on my farewell tour. That's what I like to call it. Um, nine of my schools. I've, I've tried really hard to make it to my schools every year. And this year, um, doing it in two and a half months is like a marathon. Um, and I just see great things taking place in our schools. From the students to the parents that are there volunteering, the teachers, the administrators, all of the support staff. We have great people working for our school district who, who are passionate about kids and they want to provide the best education opportunity possible. And it's just, it's been a thrill to see, um, so many of the, the schools, um, doing what they do and a reminder of why I decided to take that leap of faith eight years ago, um, to try to improve the lives of those children that are so precious. Um, and I want to say thank you to all of the schools that have welcomed me when I come in. Um, and I think we're old friends, so there really is no dog and pony show. It's like, oh, hey, how are you? We've seen you before. But it's just great to see these, these kids learning from day one now. I mean, unbelievable things happening. I would encourage, um, the naysayers of public education to actually maybe walk through the doors occasionally and see what's taking place in our schools. Mentor children. We do have a violence issue in this city and it's up to us. It's up to every one of us in this city to protect children and to be a part of their lives. And so I ask that if you're not involved in a child's life in some way, make the difference. Get involved. We have lots of mentoring organizations in this city. There's no reason why a child should not have an adult, a positive adult influence in their lives. Not one reason that that should ever take place in this city. If you go to church, that's how I met my three. Met 'em at church. Meet the kids, be involved, be a part of their lives. They need us.
Thank you, Ms. Couch. Vice Chair, Mrs. Hershey.
Thank you, Chair Wright. Uh, the best news I got last week was an email from Dr. Krisner that said that the Supreme, Florida Supreme Court, um, upheld the decision of the lower court to remove Amendment Eight from, uh, the ballot in November. This allows for local districts to have home rule. It also is a very big win for public education. I had the opportunity today to be at Twin Lakes Academy Middle School to help celebrate their Teacher of the Year with the principal and PTA and SAC. And so it was fun to walk in and surprise the teacher with flowers. They said, let Board Member Hershey go in first. She doesn't know who she is and she won't know what's happening. So that was a, that was a fun experience. Um, I would also like to thank the culinary arts students who participated. I think I could go to a restaurant if they opened it. Um, it was very, very good. Uh, and of course, I was glad that Mandarin was there. Uh, just wanted to, um, let people in District Seven know that Thursday, September twentieth at six o'clock, I will be holding a community meeting at Mandarin Oaks Elementary. And one final thing is that I look around this board and those of us sitting here tonight all have very deep roots in Duval County. And violence in our community impacts students in our schools. Jacksonville, we have a problem. And it's going to take all of us, all forms and all parts of government and leaders to move in the right direction and to work together. And while you think of violence and I, and I think that with all of us with the, the deep roots that we have, as I look around the board in Jacksonville, we know people who have been touched. They, they're probably relatives, cousins, aunts, um, nieces, nephews. It's impacted us. So I would just want to remind everyone that, um, we are well aware of our history in Jacksonville here on this board. And we have family in the community and we too have been impacted. But Jacksonville, we've got a problem and it's time to work together and stop pointing fingers.
Thank you, Vice Chair Hershey. Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, uh, echo the Vice Chairman's comments. Uh, we have a problem and it's not a new problem for Jacksonville. We have unfortunately been the leader, the murder capital of the state of Florida for a number of years. It's going to take all of us working together. The only way that we really impacted the murder rate some years ago was under the leadership of John Payton, who started the journey. And he finally, along with the council, finally realized that we cannot police our way out of this problem. It takes prevention and intervention. You can't do it just policing. Uh, until we are committed again to fund those intervention and prevention programs that were very effective, uh, in driving down the murder rate in Jacksonville, until we're willing to make that investment, be it the city, be it the chamber, we have to make that commitment. And once we make that commitment, then we can see real change. The murder rate is not getting any better in Jacksonville. In fact, it's, it's spreading. And, uh, I think this, we all are saying enough is enough, but we're not putting action behind those words. Um, what happened at Rains is very unfortunate. Uh, the good thing about it, there's a lot of good work being done at Rains. Those students are doing well. They participated, uh, in the State of the Schools event on Friday. Uh, they're learning. But what's happening in our neighborhoods, uh, is, is infecting our, infecting our students. We see too many times, we see students at expulsion hearings who brought a gun to school. Why? Because they were afraid what's going to happen on the way to or from school. Uh, so it's not just a school problem. And we need not point fingers, but work together to solve the problem. And finally, I'd like to congratulate, uh, and thank, uh, Comcast for donating the computers and six months of free internet service to the students, all the eighth grade students at Reebok Middle. Uh, I happened to sit in the audience and observe that and the kids were, the way they presented it was a surprise. They gave it to the ones who on the committee first, which was only five students. And then they say, well, let's give it to everybody. And the kids erupted in joy. So that was very rewarding and I, I know that's going to pay dividends for years to come for those students. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Board Member Grimes?
Um, probably be a little repetition of what we've heard. But it is, it's, you know, this isn't an easy job that we do. Um, and it is hard when you have people, um, say things that are so far from what we really are doing. Um, so, but we all know what we're doing and we know that, um, I know all of us were, including staff, everyone were dead, were, was completely devastated about Ra- uh, Rains and also about, um, the child from, um, Fort, was it Fort Caroline? Yeah. Yeah.
Arlington.
Arlington, okay. Um, so, you know, we all are invested in this community and certainly want the best for everybody, but particularly our kids and our kids' families. Um, we know that there is a, a lot to do there. And, um, as you said, there are lots of organizations that are, want to help. And we just, for whatever reason, I think the community has just not partnered in the way that we needed, we need to do. And, um, we will certainly, um, hopefully, maybe this will be, be the time that it happens. Um, I also, um, want to, um, um, commit, give, con- con- (laugh) give congratulations to our new Superintendent. Um, that was two months out of the box, right? Standing in front of this, in for, front of the, um, the people there. And, um, there was someone from another school board who was very, very impressed and, uh, said she was going back to, to brag on us. Um, so you did it. It, it was a very uplifting, I too, the culinary arts, uh, kids, uh, were just great and their teachers. Um, and as far as I know, Peterson still has a, a restaurant at, at the school. Yeah. Uh, I don't know if, if any others do, but I think Peterson does. Um, and on an, an up note, um, and the Superintendent mentioned it, um, we went, she and I went to Beyond School Walls Program, which, um, ta- it, Big Brothers Big Sisters, um, gets partners. Well, this was, um, they're actually the, uh, Terry Parker Culinary and they are paired with, um, the Hyatt. And, um, the general manager from the Hyatt told stor- a story about how he got involved actually in Miami with Big Brothers and Big Sisters. And, um, ca- it's coming full circle because eventually in the next few months, this, this young man that he mentored is going to be working with him at the Hyatt. Um, so it was, it was very exciting. Um, the kids were exciting, excited and the mentors were also excited, although I think some, both, both sides are a little scared too about what have I got for something to? Um, but it's, it's great that, um, a business or like that are willing to have their, their people who work there take time out to mentor children. Um, and this is, these kids are, are certainly, um, learning a lot about culinary, but have, having the opportunity of going into, um, a professional work environment and really learning, um, what it's like to be there. And, um, so, um, I think that was a real uplifting thing for us to see. And I think that's it. And I will say, Madam Chair, that I appreciated you commenting after. I know we, we say we don't co- we don't talk and we don't comment, but it's really hard sometimes. It's hard to, up here, to sit up here and listen to things that you know are not true. And, um, I appreciate that.
Thank you. I, I think it's important that when we, to, to share with the, the audience when it's so, so distant from, from what's happening so that they don't assume that's because it's said at the microphone is, is, is reality. Um, so I just want to kind of quickly, um, piggyback on, on, on Mr. Jones and Comcast and the students at Reebok Middle and the value of that partnership in terms of the fact that we're in the twenty-first century and we're in the age of technology. And now these eighth grade students not only have a computer, because sometimes that's just not the problem. They don't, they would not have internet access. It's oftentimes, the, the digital divide is not necessarily a, a piece of equipment. It is the, the access to, to internet services. So to help them with, um, understanding how powerful and how more productive their, their homework and their creativity and their thinking can be with the emergence of a piece of equipment with, uh, um, internet to, to learn, to grow and to, to, to further their, their understanding. Um, also, um, Mrs. Grimes, it was Flagler, School Board, uh, member who came up to us and was just so elated about what was witnessed at the State of the Schools. So they were going to take that concept back to, to their, their district. And, um, that's the beauty and the value of when we share with each, with each other. We learn, we've brought many ideas back from so many different districts, uh, over the years. And, and that's how we lo- uh, learn and grow and become more of a unified, um, community. When we see good things regardless of where it's happening, let's share those good things. I also want to, to comment, um, regarding your, um, um, visit with Mayo, uh, Spark Presentations because last week they, last week, last year, they actually came to the board and presented because it is a great opportunity to see students who, if you didn't know going in, you wouldn't know they were just students. You would think they were actually, uh, uh, um, grad students or doctors. The, the, it's just tremendous, the, the presentations, uh, and the work that they do in that internship program over the summer. So I wanted to, 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 to say that. Vice Chair, um, Hershey, Amendment Eight is wasn't so great. Thank you. It wasn't so great. Um, and also, um, kudos to the League of, um, Women Voters of Florida who actually filed the lawsuit. And it, if it had not been for their courageous act, we may not be, uh, sitting here and understanding and appreciating the value of home rule. There are issues and concerns and policies and initiatives that should be dealt with, uh, district by district so that each district can represent its core group of people. So I appreciate the League of Women Voters of Florida for filing that lawsuit and, and for, because they didn't just walk it, they put dollars behind it to make it, uh, to make it happen. So I, so I appreciate that. Um, uh, again, Mr. Jones, in terms of your, your connecting, uh, the reality that our city saw a decrease in criminal activities amongst, in particular, our youth is when then Mayor Payton funded the Jacksonville Journey. And then the Journey focused on intervention and pre- prevention initiatives. And, and I agree, that's what we have to, we have to get back to it. And I just want to say for, in particular, those speakers that came before tonight, come with us. We are, we are an imperfect body of people in an imperfect world. But I assure you, each of us are here and we're trying to do the very best for each and every one of our students and each and every one of our citizens in this community. As a school district, we don't have funds for preventi- preventive and interventive initiatives. Our role as a board is to fund public education. So we're limited, but that does not mean we cannot and should not. We must partner with our intergovernmental agencies to find solutions to alleviate the violence that we are seeing. And, um, uh, to ensure that our children do have indeed a brighter path. and to ensure that our children do have indeed a brighter path. And finally, on the State of the Schools, it was, I want to take this opportunity to thank the superintendent and leadership team and everybody that, every, every employee that touched the, the State of the Schools activities. And again, kudos to the seven schools in terms of the culinary skills that they displayed. And every person in that building talked of the, the taste of the food. But it was the look, my plate was so pretty, I couldn't even eat it. And it was just, you know how, that's part of the appeal. If it looks appealing, you want to eat more of it. But it was an awesome opportunity to display, Madam Superintendent, that the glass is indeed more than half full and that we're on the right direction. But that does not mean we don't want help. We want everybody who wants to help, whether it's about gun violence, whether it's about truancy, whether it's about becoming a mentor and how to help us eliminate or alleviate any problem within the school system. But the schools are only a microcosm of our community. That's why it's important that we work together. So we implore that you all come, reach out to us and talk with us so that we can sit down as a team of concerned adults and become the voice that our children need so that we can help solve this, this problem in our great city. So... Yes, ma'am.
Really need to say kudos to the comm, the Communication Department. I know they were probably doing some late nights to get things together. And I, I really appreciate all of y'all's work.
Absolutely right. And, and last, I want to, to take this opportunity to thank Dr. Kelly Coca-Dana, Dr. Dana Krisner and Director Edwards. And the superintendent for the assistance today with the, the PowerPoint and information that's relevant to our community in terms of violence. We are working as a team to make certain that we're doing the very best we can to give information. And it's information that's powerful. You have information. It's going to be put on the, the website. The Joint Legislative Committee list of members and contact information will also be put on the website along with the Duval Delegators, our Duval Delegation Team. But you, it's in your hands. You have to push the button. I, I commit to you that if they hear from you, things will change because they've heard from us. So we need the public to speak out against the ills that you see in the community by contacting our Duval delegation members, the Joint Legislative Commission and anybody else you so desire so that we can come together as a community and find solutions to our problems. Is there a motion for adjournment?
Summed.
The motion for adjournment was moved by Board Member Grimes and seconded by Vice Chair Hershey. Any discussion? Seeing none, please. All in favor? Any opposed? Hearing none, meeting adjourned.